I'd like to call to order the 7th of December 12th, 2024, regular meeting of the Shenandoah County School Board. And before we take on any business, I would like to have us consider the request from Ms. Rutz to have her join our meeting electronically from her daughter's home. Looks like that's where she is, located in Fort Myers. Do I have a motion from the board to accept that request?
I recommend that the Shenandoah County School Board allow Ms. Brandy Rutz to join the closed session and public session of the school board meeting electronically from her daughter's home located in Fort Myers, Florida.
Second by Mr. Gatchell and second by Mr. Street. Any discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. And we will consider convening in closed session. Do we have a motion to that or a recommendation from our superintendent? Sorry, trying to skip you there.
No worries.
Okay.
I recommend the school board of Shenandoah County convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of several employees of the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711a 14, and to convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the purposes of discussing and considering several student matters involving the admission, discipline, or the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record of students in the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711a 2.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Do we have a motion based on that recommendation?
I move that the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711a 14, and to discuss and consider several student matters involving the admission, discipline, or the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record of students in the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711a 2.
Thank you, Mr. Gatchell, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rickert. Any discussion? If not, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will reconvene in closed session with the goal of meeting back here at 7:00 P. M.[202.98]
We are back here at approximately two minutes after seven, so I would like to reconvene the meeting from closed session into open session to have a motion to that effect.
A move to reconvene in open session.
Sir.
We have a motion to reconvene in second, in open session. Holes in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to read the following statement. The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were notified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds ISO certified when called. Can we just have the roll call vote, Cheryl?
Mr. Street.
ISO certified.
Ms. Carlinio.
ISO certified.
Mr. Gutshon.
ISO certified.
Ms. Rhodes.
I'm going to pass over to the contacts who are certified.
Okay.
Mr. Ricker.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Ricker.
ISO certified.
Mr. Barlow.
ISO certified. That's unanimous again, and that brings us to the invocation and the pledge. Mrs. Carlinio.
Thank you. So today for the invocation, I would like to invite my friend and Reverend Herbert McMullin. He's a pastor of St. Patrick's Anglican Mission Fellowship in Ford Valley, so please welcome him. Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. I'm with you all tonight as a grateful parent of a 2012 graduate of Stroudsburg High School. We presented the educators with a considerable challenge, and they rose to the occasion, and she went on to graduate from Radford and become a wife and a mom and a businesswoman in the rodeo industry. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your great work. May we pray. Almighty God, King of the universe, loving our Father, among the Gods, the one true and you are the one true and living God who created each and every one of us exceptional in your image, your children, Father, that we might love you to our delight and to your great glory. As we gather once again in this place and in this hour to exercise our God-given right and to shoulder our God-given responsibility of overseeing the educational formation of the children of our county Shenandoah. We recognize that to you all hearts are open, all desires known, and from you no secrets are hidden, and now we call upon you cleanse the thoughts of our hearts by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit that in our deliberations we may perfectly love you and worthily magnify your holy name in the guiding and the nurturing of our children through Jesus Messiah our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
He's right for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the true love of our churches, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little hysteria there from Brandi. Do you have a motion from board to approve the agenda as it has been presented?
A move to approve the agenda as presented.
That gives Mr. Cottrells our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlinio. Hall in favor of approving the agenda as it has been presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agreed.
Any opposed? And my favorite part of the evening, recognitions.
Thank you. So tonight we are going to recognize Stroudsburg High School's FCC LA, Ms. Colts.
Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Barlow, members of the board, I'm always honored to come before you to recognize students from Stroudsburg High School. Tonight, I'm honored to present Ms. Heizerman, the advisor of our FCC LA, and she is going to recognize several students who have great accomplishments at the national convention this summer in Seattle. Ms. Heizerman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your time. We're a little behind in recognition, so I'm going to go back to last school year for a second. First, I would like to acknowledge that our chapter was recognized as a platinum level outstanding chapter this year. This is the highest level recognition that our state offers chapters. This award was presented in April at our state leadership conference. Also at that conference, we had nine students in attendance that participated in star events. Several of them earned a right by placing either first or second in the state to advance to our national level competition. They are not here with us today. Addison Jones and Bailey Walker are both juniors this year. They earned gold medals, and they also were second-place winners in national programs in action. Claire Keith, who is currently attending Radford University right now, earned a gold medal and a first place in her project, Chapter Service Project. Paige Heizerman, attending Bridgewater College right now, earned a gold medal and a first-place trophy in leadership. And with me here, I have Piper Brokers, Taylor Rogers, well, Taylor's not here, and Neha Maia Thomas. They're all juniors. They earned gold medals and first-place trophies in Chapter In Review Portfolio Level Two. They did advance, and at the national level in Seattle, Washington this summer, they competed at our star events there. Paige Heizerman earned a gold medal and a third-place recognition in the nation. Piper and Taylor and Neha Maia represented Stroudsburg High School FCC LA. They also received gold medals, and they were a second place in the entire nation for FCC LA. So thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your time. We're working on lots of great projects this year, so we really hope to be back here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is all the recognition?
That's it for this evening.
All right. Next on the agenda are those who wish to speak publicly, and so I need to give a little background behind this particular activity, so bear with me. Those who have signed up have given their address and so forth, so we know that they're folks from our community. We invite those who do want to speak up publicly to do so. If anybody else wants to speak, it's still time to do that, so you may do it in the next few minutes. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. The board generally allows up to 30 minutes for public comments at the beginning of the meeting. If there are large numbers of speakers, we don't have that problem this evening, so we don't have to worry about limiting total time. All comments should address a matter related to Shenandoah County Public Schools. Complaints regarding division employees should be directed to the school principal or an appropriate school division official. School Board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students. How one can especially respectfully disagree with others' views, speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, to the superintendent, to a staff member, nor to the audience. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. Those who have signed up, that have, as I say, followed the procedures, and we have asked that those folks are fulfilling their roles as stakeholders and have, as I said, dealt with addresses in the community. Speakers are called to order in which they're signed up, and speaker may not speak more than once on a specific topic. If anybody has written comments, they could pass those out to the school board. We don't have those, so I will instead just call on the first person who signed up, and that is tonight Catherine Coffler.
Good evening. When discussing the Shenandoah County Public School policy regarding flags in our classroom during the July school board meeting, Board Member Carlinio made the following statement. Unfortunately, the education system in our country has shifted its focus for the past few decades towards more brainwashing and indoctrinating our children rather than educating them. I was teaching during a portion of this so-called brainwashing and indoctrination period. I also know many students who are educated and graduated from the Shenandoah County Public School System during this time period, including my own children and grandchildren, other family members, friends, children of friends, and community members. I then began reflecting about the accomplishments of many of these students, and would like to take this opportunity to share my list. It includes medical professionals, including doctors, nurses, therapists, and medical support staff members, CEOs and other successful businessmen and women, skilled tradesmen with lucrative careers, classroom teachers, administrators, and support staff currently serving Shenandoah County Public Schools, coaches who have brought sports teams throughout our county to district, regional, and state playoffs, employees of American professional sports teams, members serving in the military, including graduates of our United States Military Academies, college professors, daycare providers, owners of successful businesses throughout the county, including several downtown Woodstock eating and reading spots, attorneys, performers, and patrons of the arts, a judge in the Shenandoah Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court, a current member and former speaker of the Virginia House of Delicates, a Virginia State Senator, three members of our current school board, and great parents who are supporters of our schools and their communities. I'm sure I've only scratched the surface with this list. My point is that in addition to subject matter, these students were taught critical thinking skills, empathy for others, team building skills, and a myriad of life skills that have shaped them into the successful citizens they are today. I do not consider them products of the brainwashing and indoctrinating education system Mrs. Carlinio described. Thank you.
Steve Heisman.
School Board members, Chairman Barlow, Dr. Shepherd, thank you for allowing my voice to be heard tonight. I couldn't be here the last two months, and I ask, I want to thank Charles Street for saying a few words in my absence. I'm Steve Heisman, District Two, Conningville area. Weekly religious education in its first week this year is starting off 30 percent stronger than what it ended last year, and that's a very powerful message telling us that young students want to learn about Christ our Savior. And if I could throw in just a little plug here, for those interested in supporting weekly religious education, also known as Bible Break, the organization is holding a fundraiser banquet this coming Saturday evening from five to seven at the Edinburgh Farm Department. There are a few tickets still available on their website, and that address, if you're interested, is biblebreak.org. Got that?
Yes, sir.
Right up. Second thing I'd like to talk about is the importance of each and every school employee, the roles that they play, and the positive impact that they have on our students in the school system. Every custodian, every school bus driver, every SRO, all the way up through the teachers and administration, clean up to Dr. Shepherd. It's very, very important, the leadership that you provide, everyone, and the examples that you set. I saw this firsthand myself at Norfolk Middle School, and a custodian that just recently retired from up there, he's back working part-time, but his name is Jay Ross, and he has had a positive impact on many students over the years, and in particular, three of my grandsons that went to Norfolk and/or are still attending Norfolk. Jay grew up out in Conningville with us, and he worked with us on the farm many years ago when we were all teenagers. Over the last couple of years, we all still live out there, and I see him around the community, and he'd tell me stories about interacting with my grandsons, and actually, most of them were positive stories. Then, the three boys would be telling me stories about a real cool custodian that they enjoyed talking with and hanging out with here and there as long as he's doing his work, and his name was Mr. Ross. And from their stories, I could see that they have a great admiration for Jay, and they will remember that for a very, very long time to come, and I'm sure that there are many other employees in the school system that have a positive impact on students throughout the county, and that is a very, very good thing. Thank you very much.
That concludes the folks who have signed up. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? To be compliant, if you would fill this out.
Should I do it now?
You can do it later. I think we can.
Thank you. I was going to say, I think I'm bothering a friend here. I wouldn't blame it being me if I wasn't. Good evening, School Board members. I'll keep this very quick. And Dr. Shepherd, I just wanted to put out my appreciation for all the work you collectively have done. The school... have done, the school board, the administration, the staff of the schools, and following up on what I said during the last meeting. But, the rankings, you know, I really want to shine a positive light on the work that the senior administration has done, and the satellites, which are all the schools, in concentrating on the improvements that Dr. Shepherd has called out in her plans over the last few years. So, when she started, and Dr. Johnson retired, I think we were at 110 or 104 ranked in the state, we're now 56th. So, that is basically, we've doubled where we were in four years. I mean, I have looked back and looked at through the last 15 or 20 years, that's unheard of across the state, but especially at Shenandoah County. So, you know, so I just want to thank all of you, and particularly Dr. Shepherd, for the hard work that you guys continue to do, and through all the hurdles and all the things we've had, you know, and once again, tonight, this boardroom's kind of empty, so you can tell there's nothing political nationwide. I mean, we don't have anybody with White Dudes for Harris hats in here complaining, you know, that seems to only draw them out. So, staying positive and continuing to doing what you guys continue to do, I appreciate, and I appreciate all of you and all the hard work you've done. So, for the record, I'm Mike Shyvey, Quicksburg, Virginia, District One. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments. So, we'll move into the consent agenda. We have had those items before us now, a week or so? So, do I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda items?
I move to approve the following consent agenda items.
Okay, and we have about 10 of those. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Rickert, for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Cortlinio, seconds. A motion to approve the following consent agenda item. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, passes unanimously. Informational Agenda, 4.1, information on end-of-day student pickup procedures at elementary schools.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shepherd. My name is Veronica Zimmerman. I'm the principal at Sandy Hook Elementary School. Tonight, I want to speak about our dismissal procedures at Sandy Hook. First of all, our goals have always been to create more space on Stickle Loop, as our campus is very different from the other two, and also to get buses to the school so that cars can get to Simpsonville Middle School, as well as increase the amount of time that elementary students are on the bus. So, last year, we changed it to where elementary students were the last to be picked up, so they spend less time, like I said, on the bus. Beginning of the year, we issue bus tag numbers to every student, K to five, and on these bus tag numbers, there is their name, their grade, their address, and what bus they ride, as well as we give every single student a car tag that is assigned to their parents through our Power School System, which allows every student to be connected to a parent. And some students never use that because they don't get picked up all year, but we give every student one just in case they need to be picked up. Around 2:30, our SRO begins lining cars up. We are able to utilize our side parking lot and the front parking lot, which has really helped. At around 2:45, we have a staff member that begins getting the school assigned number for each parent, so every parent has a car tag that hangs on the mirror of their car. And then, at 3 o'clock, all car riders are dismissed to the cafeteria and to the library. So, the library, we have students who are going to the front parking lot, and then the cafeteria, we have students who are going to the side parking lot. At 3:05, all the staff are out of the cones and in place, and staff begin escorting students to the appropriate car. Parents stay in the car so that staff can escort the students to the car and safely put them in the car. And then, that takes about 10 minutes for the buses arrive. Our buses arrive around 3:15, and then, at that time, we call all bus riders out, and then they close the buses, and buses pull out around 3:25. Our number one priority is always safety. So, with the SRO, the staff assisting with directing traffic, we have lots of hands on deck for this to be able to work. Adults are monitoring the parking lot, and they are assisting with loading the cars. All cars are stopped before students are allowed to get into a car. Like I said, all parents remain in their vehicles, and cars are stopped once the buses start coming so that buses may enter the bus lane. Once buses are stopped, we continue dismissing the cars. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the good job you all do out there every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shepherd. I'm Tara Mason. I'm the principal at WW Robinson. This year at WW Robinson, we changed our school dismissal order on the central campus to ensure our elementary school bus riders board our buses after our high school and middle school students. This was in part because of the success that Sandy Hook Elementary School experienced last year in making those similar changes. Logistically, it just makes sense because our elementary school students sit in the front of the bus, so then the high school and the middle school students aren't walking past our kids. But more importantly for us, this transition has helped to alleviate student behaviors. No longer are students waiting that 15 to 20 minutes for a middle school dismissal and then a high school dismissal for those students to board and walk past them and say things to them and, you know, engage. And so, in making this transition, we also moved our car line that was previously our parent pickup line from door two over to door eight on the side of our building. This prevents our parents from being in the midst of those middle school and high school students as they're trying to get on their buses. So, at 3:10, students that are being picked up are released from the classroom to the cafeteria. Parents line up at door eight. We have asked that our parents not line up before 3:00. This keeps that area clear in case of an emergency, if, you know, we needed to evacuate the building, we have students who stream out in that area. We also, then, at 3:15 is when our bus riders are released and our car riders start going out to their parents. Once they arrive to the cafeteria, the students are signed out. They go out, parents have gone through, and they have given their name and a signature. This process has taken about 15 minutes typically. First days of school can be a little bit longer sometimes. This week, for the, I guess we're on day four of using what's called Pickup Control. It's a program that we're piloting to see if it will work and help expedite the sign-out procedures. And so, if it's successful and helps making dismissal more efficient, then we're going to look into actually purchasing the thing that is available on free trial. I will say we got out in nine minutes today, which is the best that we've ever done since I've been there. Do you have questions for me?
Are you having any issues with parents lining up early? I remember at Sandy Hook years ago, they'd line up at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Yes. I say 3:00. I just sort of pushed till 2:45. Our kids go out on the playground sometimes in that area, and again, like, we ran a fire drill during that time, and it's a lot of students that are coming through. So, we've really pushed hard but tried to honor in between with our parents wanting to line up early and get through the line, which is why, like, under 10 minutes, I feel like it's less of a concern for our families, because it is, it is a long line when you're standing out there, and we just, we don't have the space to put them inside to be able to do a lineup, nor is the central campus set up to go. So, they have honored, my SRO has gone out and chatted with them, and so, he'll, he'll come back about 2:45, and they're like, oh, we're going to tell on you. And I'm like, and he's like, Ms. Mason said I could. Okay, so, it's been okay. It was, it was more challenging when we first pushed that transition, but they have been really good in helping us since then.
Good.
Well, we appreciate the adjustments that have been made. I know from firsthand experience, it's not, there's, if there was an easy solution, it would be done by now, and unfortunately, that doesn't exist with, all of our campuses are quite different. I was at the central campus, it's all right there, but hopefully, continue to see good results out of the new procedures, and that can at least, you know, make it a little bit more efficient for everyone.
That's what we hope. That's the goal. We don't want parents standing out for 30 minutes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Barlow, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. I'm Jen Burner. I am principal at Ashby Lee. Just like our, my ladies here, you know, we talk and discuss and see what's the, not only the safest for our students, but what's the best. So, we also went to our students boarding last on the southern campus, and not only to lower our bus referrals, but really for the safety of our students, as Ms. Mason was speaking about. So, we started out the school year, we were, we had a pretty good plan. We had two car lines coming through, tried to get our kids on the bus when the buses came. We just could not get all our pickups in the cars before the buses came. It was a lot to get many kids in about five minutes and not lose instruction all the time. So, we came up with a plan, and when students returned from Labor Day, we have moved to more of Robinson's model, where parents are picking up at door number two. When students are released, they go to a bus room that is supervised. We have a lot of tech gurus at our school that have really nice, pretty spreadsheets, and when parents come to sign them out, they also have a school-assigned card tag with the student number. The kids have the number on their backpack along with their information. So, students, adults sign the student out, the student goes with the correct parent, they line up, and it has been so much more efficient. We're finished about 10, 15 minutes earlier. Parents have been really good about waiting until about 2:30, 2:45 to line up. We've set a lot of the same parameters as Robinson, but most importantly, it's keeping all our kiddos safe in the school so we can get them to their designated adult, which is the most important. Are there any questions?
I have a comment. It's very refreshing to see, and how good the system is, that you're continuing to monitor and make it better all the time. And what's especially pleasing is your collaborative approach, where there's not a, wasn't invented here, so we can't do it, and sharing it. It's, it's hard to break through that human desire to do that, and you guys have done it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Hodges, I guess we're going to hear a snapping report from you.
Good evening. Our administrators have done an amazing job of hiring as we continue to navigate another very difficult hiring season. Ongoing teacher shortages have continued to make headlines. Fewer people are going into the teaching profession. There's a much smaller pool of qualified candidates, and there are many school divisions competing for the same talented applicants. Our teacher retention rate for the 23-24 school year is just under 82%. Remember that teacher retention is the opposite of turnover, so 81.6% of our staff continued teaching for us at SCPS this year. This also means our turnover rate is just over 18%, which is still under the national teacher turnover rate of 23% as reported in March of 2024 for the end of the 22-23 school year, reported by Education Resource Strategies. The national teacher turnover rate last year was 16%. The division's turnover rate this year is considerably higher than the last three years, which has been around 15%. Here's a list of the positions that were filled this year, including transfers. This list totals 192 positions that our administrators filled. Again, some of these were filled due to vacancies that were created by transfers within the division. I've noted in red the positions that have experienced the most turnover. Within this list, 78 are new to SCPS. We utilize a number of methods for recruiting and advertising. This past year, we attended 14 in-person job fairs in Virginia, Maryland, and Pennsylvania. We also advertise vacant positions on electronic job boards at colleges and universities. We do paid advertising on Google and Indeed, and through social media sites, and some advertising through our local newspapers, both in print and online. Last year, I shared with you that SCPS partnered with ITEACH, which is an alternative teacher certification program that allows teacher candidates with a bachelor's degree to complete coursework for licensure within one year. This program was approved by the Virginia Department of Education and will be reevaluated at the end of three years. We currently have 12 teachers participating in the ITEACH program, and two of these have moved into the final residency stage of the program.
Can I ask a question right there?
Sure.
Have we had any that have completed it as of yet?
Not yet. Only two are in the final stage.
Gotcha. But how long have we been doing it?
Since last year. It started last year.
Gotcha. Sorry about that.
The elementary and special education take a tad longer in some, in some instances.
Gotcha.
As of today, we have 36 unfilled teacher and professional staff vacancies. We started the year with eight long-term substitutes who are covering vacant positions until these vacancies can be filled with a qualified teacher. This year, we created a new job classification of teacher/intern for teachers who are within one year of completing the requirements for a teacher license. This classification allows the teacher to be paid on the teacher's salary scale and receive full benefits while they're completing the requirements for licensure. In the past, they would have been classified as a long-term substitute without benefits, even though they were in the position the entire year. We have 10 new teacher interns. Remaining vacancies have been covered by assigning additional blocks to existing teachers, and we have several paraprofessionals in elementary schools who are covering classes while they're working on their teaching degree or until a qualified teacher is hired. In this case, a substitute paraprofessional is hired to temporarily replace the paraprofessional in their role. Due to the continued shortage of school counselors, we've hired counselor interns, classroom counselors, and a career counselor to assist the counseling departments. Overall, we filled 126 of the 162 professional staff vacancies, and remember again that those include transfers as well. We currently have 15 unfilled support positions of the 68 support staff vacancies. This is similar to the number of support staff vacancies we had last year. This chart shows the experience of teachers who left SCPS grouped by their years of experience. The purple bar to the right of each series represents this past year. Over half of the teachers who left us were our more experienced teachers who had 11 or more years of experience. This year, 64% of our new teachers have zero to three years of experience. We will provide them with support through our QMET program, which stands for Quality Mentoring for Exceptional Teaching, and they've each been assigned a mentor as well. At one elementary school where they have a particularly large number of new teachers, they've devised a plan to provide a higher level of support. The instructional coaches are helping new teachers with lesson plans, walking them through step by step, and they're co-teaching and modeling best practices. In conjunction with QMET, they're providing additional training on classroom management, collaborative planning, and behavior management. The special education instructional coach is meeting with The special education instructional coach is meeting with new special education teachers every Monday and there's an increased level of support from school admin also. Only twenty percent, twenty-one percent of the new teachers are the more experienced teachers with eleven or more years of experience, but they're still in need of support to learn SCPS practices and procedures. And while we're talking about who's coming to SCPS, I'd like to point out that twenty percent of our new teachers previously, previously taught in SCPS and have returned to teach here. I've shown you the experience we lost and the experience of the new staff we've hired. This slide shows the total experience of our teaching staff for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The orange and brown colors represent eleven or more years of teaching experience. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, forty-nine percent of our teaching staff have eleven or more years of experience. We have twenty-four SCPS graduates returning as new teachers this year. This is the largest number of SCPS graduates to return since I've been tracking this data point over the last three years. These are color-coded by the campus where they graduated. We have three paraprofessionals who became teachers this year. These ladies worked on their teaching degree while working full-time as paraprofessionals. In SCPS, we allow support staff to do their student teaching and practical assignments while continuing to receive full salary and benefits. We also provide a long-term substitute paraprofessional to fill in temporarily while they complete their student teaching. And as you can see here, Morgan Schlick was a paraprofessional at Peter Mullenberg last year and is now a family and consumer science teacher at Peter Mullenberg this year. Anita Stevens was a paraprofessional at Stonewall Jackson last year and is now a fifth grade teacher at Sandy Hook. And Deborah Dominguez was a paraprofessional at Peter Mullenberg last year and is now an EL teacher at Stonewall Jackson High School. Here you can see the divisions that our teachers went to this year, with Rockingham County being the highest at eight percent. To share another perspective, this chart on the right shows where our teachers live who travel here from outside of Shenandoah County. While eight percent of the teachers who left us went to Rockingham County, eleven percent of our staff live in the Rockingham County Harrisonburg area and travel here to work, to work. Likewise, six percent of the teachers who left went to Frederick County, but seven percent of our teachers travel here to work from the Frederick County Winchester area. About seventy-five percent of our teachers live in Shenandoah County. During the exit survey process, the top three primary reasons teachers noted they were leaving were retirement, family and personal considerations such as personal health, caring for family members with health conditions, or to stay gone with children, and dissatisfaction with the school, division, climate, or supervisor. This is primarily related to student behaviors. However, this conversation has shifted somewhat from previous years. In the past, we've heard it was related to lack of support for student behaviors, so there seems to be some improvement in that area. In addition to the primary reasons, teachers also noted demanding workload and distance from home as secondary reasons for leaving. Through exit conversations, many discussed being overwhelmed with the workload and meetings, meetings for teachers. Others referenced that they would only be traveling a few minutes to their new school versus up to an hour or more drive to SCPS. Some of the positives that came out of the exit surveys and conversations, teachers continue to praise the division in that all decisions are made in the best interest of students. They recognize that students truly are the number one priority here. They feel that SCPS offers a friendly family environment with a strong sense of camaraderie and support from their peers within the school and the division. One specifically referenced that SCPS is the epitome of southern hospitality. They appreciate the many professional development opportunities and that central office staff are approachable and responsive. They're also appreciative of the continued efforts to improve health insurance contribution for those with family coverage. And this was even mentioned by teachers who don't have coverage for their dependents. So what can we do? Most importantly, we need to continue to show our staff that they're valued and heard. Our salary scales need to be more competitive with surrounding divisions who we compete with for teachers. And we also need to continue to improve our contributions towards health insurance for families. This year, days were added to the school calendar for professional development and workdays to allow teachers time to work in their classrooms. This came as a result of concerns that were shared during the superintendent's listening tour. We need to continue to include this extra time as well as relevant professional development for our teachers. And because of the large number of teachers who were new to teaching or who have come into teaching through alternative routes, we should also consider including our new teachers in some version of a mentor program for up to two additional years beyond their first year of teaching for additional guidance, collaboration, and support. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Oh, we can have that. Is that already the board dogs? Or is it getting more?
Thanks for that. We really appreciate the, the different aspects and perspectives of this. It's, it's interesting to look at it from various perspectives, gives us a good broad view. So thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Dr. Heingard, your favorite subject, the cell phone policies.
Good evening Chairman Barlow and members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. I've shared some information with you and happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability, but Agenda four point three has to do with the cell phone policy, as you recall and have actually have some information presented about that. And so I tried to take a lot of conversation and a lot of the information, a lot of from what administrators have said, and shared this with the teacher group just the other day. And so all of that feedback is kind of wrapped up into, into what you have in front of you as a draft policy. So happy to try and answer any questions or shed any light on any of the, any pieces in there that you may not understand, but I think is pretty self-explanatory.
Who was it that came up with the, the phrase arrival and dismissal as opposed to bell to bell? What group came up with that?
Well, that came out in conversation actually with the elementary student, with the elementary principals. And the rationale was that all, elementaries don't necessarily function on the bell to begin the day and end the day. They, they let the kids go out to get on the bus. You kind of just heard when it's clear and so it might not be a designated bell, but even though after that, many elementary school students are still waiting in the school for their parents to pick them up. And so, you know, there's that time that they would prefer students not, not being on their phone. So that's, that's kind of where that came from.
I find that to be a very helpful comment, actually, because bells aren't always bells. I mean, there could be a series of bells, no bells. And while it was kind of glib for the politicians to say bell to bell, which, which was a, you know, a good way to maybe, to short, give it a nickname if you could. I think the arrival and dismissal concept is a little bit more precise and can hold people more accountable and defiable. So I found that to be a helpful.
Yeah, and I think both are more applicable in the right situation, you know? The high school certainly has a bell that's, that's, you know, tarry bell, that's when instruction starts and then there's a dismissal bell when kids leave. So that could work there.
And we will be discussing this at our work session. But any questions for Dr. Heingard right now?
Thank you. I just have a question. Was, was this fine for them in terms of being clear? They understood this well? I mean, and I ask because I would have probably made it a little bit shorter and more simple. But I will say, if this is something that works for everybody in terms of understanding what this all means, then, and I'm, I'm fine with the substance of it. I was just wondering if it was just a little bit too encompassing.
I, I didn't hear anyone, anyone say they didn't understand anything or, or anything wasn't clear. I, I know that there was some, they really liked the consequences being laid out, being very concrete, I can tell you that, which, which obviously helps. But, you know, this, this is a draft, so anything you prefer to, we look at and we reword or craft differently. You know, this is, this is pretty much, it's, it's not absolute cut and paste from the state, you know, guidance document, but it's pretty close. It's very similar.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I like the, the last page with the medical exceptions, the emergency consequences, all that I think is great. I was just more talking in terms of, A, the definitions, that I think we could have been a little bit more concise. I don't know if that would be easier for people to understand if we were a little bit more concise. And then everything else, I mean, I don't know, is this something that we put everything in there or leave it a little bit more, you know? If the principals are fine with this in terms of the implementation, then, then I'm okay with that. I just.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I hadn't, like you said, they, I hadn't gotten any feedback that, that it wasn't. I know next Tuesday, I believe, we have another principals meeting. We can certainly see if they have any, any further, you know, comments or feelings about that. Certainly ask them, but.
But once again.
The more, I think the, the more examples and, and the more that can be included, you know, helps them. I know that just the other day, there was a question about the, the earpods or airpods and being able to literally communicate just with them. And it's right there.
Yeah, yeah. No, I wanted more encompassing, like I, I was just wondering if it was something that we could make it a little bit more concise and say, you know, like cell phones and personal electronic communications and then make that all one paragraph, just little nitpicking like that, but that was all.
We can and should discuss that at the work session. So that's good. Anybody else have any questions for Dr. Heingard?
Have you heard anything about allowing the kids to have them at the high school level, middle school level at lunchtime?
That has, that has come up, yes.
The more, the more I hear here lately, we really should be looking at that for the sports because things change throughout the day and to get information to the parents and.
Yeah, and that's something, that's something to, to consider and, and think about. Yeah, I, I, that, that I have heard that, that, that allowing them to have, allowing students to have them at lunch is something that I think would, some, some would favor, but I think it's something that others would not favor, you know? And so it's, it's trying to find the balance.
Well, I've heard from students here lately that play sports and do extracurricular activities and they're like, if we're not on our Chromebook, which come to find out from what I'm hearing, a lot of teachers don't use the Chromebooks from what I'm hearing. But even if they've got the Chromebook open, they've got to be signed into certain apps like Remind or SportsU to even get those notifications, whereas if they had their phones at least at lunch, they would get those notifications, be able to respond or let their parents know. Having a son that plays football and soccer, I completely understand that.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing how over the past, and I don't know how many years, you know, that, that communication shifted from being, from the school to the parent to being from the, from the school to the child to the parent. So it's, it's kind of interesting how that seems to have happened. But I know it, it might be something that we can, can look at. I know Remind was, was purchased for all schools to use.
I do want to personally thank you for, while we were discussing this in an ethereal way, you got each of the segments of school system to articulate what they liked, didn't like, and it was very comprehensive and a very, very nice draft document. So I, I personally appreciate the, the strong and very, very sound effort at giving us a draft. So thank you for that.
I should have one more question.
Absolutely.
Because I don't know if a few of the neighboring districts have actually already passed some of this cell phone policy. Are you aware of which ones that they've done this or?
I, I, I can't say definitively. I know exactly which school. I'm, I'm confident many are really looking at this and I know some have. The, the documents that I shared earlier that had a number of different ones, all of those divisions, those were the actual new policies that they crafted. One of them, I think, was Fairfax. I can't remember where the others were from, but.
I was just wondering if they were following this kind of format or if they already had something else or?
It's, it's really true. From what I've seen, it's all over the place. It's from, from a paragraph or two to two or three pages. It's everything in between.
Thank you.
Dr. Heingard, first I want to commend you for this effort being put into this, you, the administrators. I think it's very good. I do like the detailed layout. That way, you know, there's not, it's not vague, you know? Something like this, I do feel like this is, as big as this is in schools, there needs to be, needs to be spelled out and clarified. So, you know, I, I personally feel it's a good job clarifying everything, electronic devices, this, that. I apologize, I didn't want to contact you. That's my fault. I had one slot to call you and I'm sorry, somebody else took that slot. Sorry. Anyway, but I did, I did take the time. You suggested to talk to the principals and talk to the administration that, you know, I'm, I'm obviously cellphone shouldn't be an issue at elementary school.
Right.
But I did stop in and talk to the administration at North Fork and Stonewall and I was surprised. I, I didn't realize that North Fork, you know, the, the strict policy that she has, you know, bell to bell.
Yeah.
And I was like, wow.
She's pretty much already there. And that's why I said, we even have some variances among ourselves right now.
And so, you know, I, I was very impressed with Ms. Noonan. Is it mister, doctor?
Doctor.
Doctor now? Yeah, doctor now. With that and, and then talking to Mr. Dorman, I did understand the only difference with his policy was, was during the lunch break. And I get that, I have to admit. Like Mike was talking about, it was very helpful during fair week when the JV football game was canceled and I understand because of the heat, the extreme of heat, that can be very dangerous. You know, my son was able to tell me on his lunch break, game was canceled. I didn't have to, I could adjust to my schedule, didn't have to, you know, well, there's no game, so. So I understand that viewpoint during lunch break. I don't have to call a school. So that probably is the only thing that maybe I can see that is a big help. But anyway, I just want to commend a, a good job in the, in the policy and coming out with something very clear.
Yeah, and that, you know, it is, some, you know, Tim Taylor would say, you know, it's the information age, you know, it's just constant information, we're overloaded with information, changed with information and trying to keep up with it. You know, this is a very easy way to do that. It's, it's through cell phone, text messaging, and so it does make it very easy and quick and handy and efficient, but, you know, I, that, not sure that's all students are using it for.
Well, there's no doubt that the key here to me is that without a doubt, it, it's eliminate the distraction during instructional time. And cut down on the bullying or whatever that takes place on social media, but obviously that's the priority here to me.
The one I'm also hearing a lot about from parents is number three. They want to know that the teachers are in fact going to be modeling this and not being on their cell phones during, you know, when. and not being on their cell phones during, you know, when, during school day. That's the big question that I get repeatedly.
Yes, I understand that.
I suggest that this discussion is germane for our work session rather than for Dr. Hunder. But anyway, kudos. And now we're going to throw you back into the tarpit here and you're going to explain a little bit more about some other policies, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Agenda item four point.
I'm sorry. Ms. Rooks can't hear you unless you speak right into your mic. So if you could kind of pull your mics closer, she can't hear when you're speaking. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, agenda item four point four. This, this you'll see is called regulations for gang activity or association. And we already have policy JFCE. And so this is a regulation that supports that policy and is required. So this, that's, that's why you see this regulation in front of you tonight for information. And we'll come back to you at the next meeting. But basically in a nutshell, to summarize that, when, when there, and this has gone on for as long as I can ever remember, when our local law enforcement find out about new gang activity or gang, gang information, they will then share that out to the school administrators and teachers so that they're aware of that and see it. And if they see it in school to, to make the authorities aware at that point and what have you. But that's, that's what this regulation is intended to do. And then also policy, oh, excuse me, regulation GCD. There's one, one little change we needed to make on page two. And that is under, under number four, under the 12-month staff. Number four, where it says that the number of days that can be taken be extended to seven instead of five. Because if you recall in August, you, you increased the days for them. But, but number four, and item number four didn't increase the number of days that they could take. So they got more time, but they couldn't take it. So this just, this just squares that up. So that, so yeah, they got more time and, and number four says you have, you can take more time. So that's just to, to get that squared up right there. But obviously that was the only change for that.
Dave, I just wanted to go back to the previous, the regulations for gang activity. Yeah, sorry. So what, the bottom line here is that, is there going to be more training to increase the awareness of the threat of gang activity identification, et cetera? Is that, is that the, the import of this?
It's, well, this, this is just to say that, this is to say what we do. We didn't have any, any regulation that says what we do. We have a policy that says what we should do, didn't say what we should, what we do do. And this, what this policy, this regulation will do. And you can see there near the bottom, training to increase awareness of the threat and staff shall be provided as needed. Because a lot of times we're, we're pretty blessed, although we're not immune. And so this isn't something that's pervasive, but it's not 100% absent either. And so when, when our local law enforcement realize, hey, there's something going on here that our, our local schools need to know about, then they go and set up a time to, to go and share with the, with the teachers and the administrators. But it's also what the principals request. When they start seeing or hearing things, they may go to the, the local law enforcement and say, hey, can, can you come in and tell us a little more about this? This is something we've been seeing. So that's kind of the way that we've, we've done this in the past. It seems, it seems to import.
I'm glad you got this, this nugget here to begin with. And as, God forbid, but we know probably will happen, this kind of activity does reach it, we can probably get even more specific about ways that we would deal with it. So the fact that we have a placeholder now to, to put this in a little bin, if you will, to expand as time goes on is probably a really good thing.
All right, any questions about any one of those?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Shepherd, we're getting here about a request to increase fiscal year 2025 operating budget.
Yes. So the 24, 2024, 2025 Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDA Part B flow-through was awarded $156,718 more than budgeted. The additional funds need to be appropriated accordingly. These are federal reimbursable funds and no additional local funds are needed. So action will be requested at the October school board meeting. Any questions about the additional IDA funds? Request to increase the fiscal year 2025 special budget. We received more, we were allocated more Perkins funding for the 2024, 2025 school year. This is funds that are used for our career and technical education. The allocation was $9,176 more than we appropriated. So we will request actions to appropriate that at the October school board meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
So it looks like we have one action item tonight, and that is the personnel recommendations. Do we have a move to approve the personnel list as it has been presented to us?
I move to approve our personnel list as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Gutshahl. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rickert. We have a motion and a second to approve the personnel list that was presented previously. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? And so that takes us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So school was started. We've had a great start to the school year. As of September the 4th, we had 5,543 students in grades K through 12, which is up slightly from last year by 36 students. Attendance, we are continuing to see improvement in our attendance numbers year over year. After seeing significant jumps in August, the last couple of years, we once again saw attendance rise the first month of the school year as we went from 95.75% in 2023 to 96.32% this year. We had a lot of our students compete at the Shenandoah County Fair. Our FFA students from all of our middle schools and high schools showed their animals throughout the week with many taking home prizes and best in class. Additionally, they volunteered at the dairy barn, helped lead fair field trips for the elementary students, and completed the always popular Ag Olympics. All three of our elementary schools have their second and fifth grade classes take field trips to the fair with our high school FFA students and middle school FFA students leading them on the tours. All three of our high school bands performed together at the fair's veteran tribute in the grandstands. And then the Triplet Tech Career and Technical Pavilion saw our current Triplet students showing off their skills over the course of three days to students and fairgoers. Also, our Triplet Tech students went to the Rockingham County Fair and competed in the skilled trade competition. Barely a week into the school year, Triplet Tech students participated in the association, General Contractors of Virginia Youth Construction Skilled Trades Competition at the Rockingham County Fair. Jamie Van Anden placed first in electricity, Merrick Wages placed first in masonry, and Kayden Foster placed third in carpentry. So congratulations to those students. One of our speakers earlier tonight mentioned our increase in rank for our student accreditation. And I just want to say that the success over the last few years is a tribute to our teachers, our school administrators, our division, division administrators. It takes everyone to achieve this great increase in rank and that we have seen over the last few years. So we just are really appreciative, appreciative of all of our staff here in Shenandoah County. They do a great job and we're, and we're very grateful for them. And then one other, we want to, Signal Knob wants to give a shout out to the masonry class at Triplet Tech. Their students are helping to construct the new outdoor classroom at Signal Knob Middle School, and that work is ongoing now. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the superintendent? Randy, can you, can you hear me?
I can.
You've been on the.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, would you like to begin school board member comments?
Sure. So I had an earlier conversation this week with someone from the Coalition for Better Schools. I wanted to check in to see how the, we were progressing on the changes and updates to our southern campus with Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary. And, you know, thrilled to report that those changes are almost coming to an end and complete. But what was interesting about the conversation is when I asked about their funding and how things were coming along. A rough estimate right now, and I think there's probably some uniforms for the spring to be bought. They're coming in at almost more, well, half, a little bit more than half of the cost that it costs the division in 2020. So when I go back and I think about the money that we used back then and that my previous questions about the audit, you know, I know I put it before the board and it's kind of just sat there. It's not pressed. I started looking again and back at the volumes that I had asked for. And, you know, there's, there's so many questions about where money went, where it came from. Shenandoah Forward, there's, there's virtually nothing on record about those donations other than I know that three, who provided three of those donations in the bulk of those, those fundings. I did discover that the frozen salaries that we pulled approximately $135,000 from were the student support specialist positions that we funded in 2019, 2020. Ironically, all three of those frozen positions were from the southern end. We pulled, there was $75,000 pulled from a position in Stonewall Jackson High School, $30,000 from North Fork, and $30,000 from Ashby Lee, that would have funded student support specialists. So not only did we, did the 2020 name change take from our most delicate kids on all ends of the county of, you know, all races, creeds, walk to life, it also potentially put our most at-risk kids on the southern end in jeopardy. Why we didn't pull the whole amount from the frozen, the frozen, or the student support specialists we had allotted, there was nine of them at the time, I would have tuned up about $600,000. I don't have any idea. I went back and I looked at the minutes from our, from that time. We talked about the, the spend of funds, you know, the, the unused SVRP tuition of $133,000. And when I look into that, if I take it at face value, that money wasn't supposed to be used for that. I don't understate if either was a savings. I'm not sure there actually was. There's a lot of questions around what went on there. And, you know, I know that the thought process is as well, those folks are no longer with us and a majority of them aren't. But there's so many things that we have to look at as far as practices go. And it still doesn't clear up the fact that we have pretty much touched everything that you did. And we're coming in at half the cost. And we have four years of a Biden administration with inflation. So why did it cost us so much money? Why, where did that money go? Did it truly go for what it was supposed to? So there's, there's a lot, there's still a lot to that and, you know, it's, I'm not sure I'm ready to let that, let that go just yet. I want the board to understand that there's a lot to that. It's probably one of the, one of the worst moves and one of the most controversial moves that this county or this school system could make probably in its history that it accomplished tonight. So with that. And lastly, I appreciate you all allowing me to attend tonight from my daughter's home in Florida. I don't know if any of you know, but she delivered a beautiful six pound, nine ounce baby girl 10 days ago. And I got to be a part of that. It's been, it's been an interesting year for me personally. In February, I watched my mother take her last breath. And 10 days ago, I got to watch my granddaughter, first granddaughter take her first. And the changes that I've been through in the last year have been a complete whirlwind. And it's caused some reflection and things of that nature. So with me going forward this evening, I'd like to announce that my resignation from the Shenandoah County School Board will be effective October 1st. I'll be back in the county for our next meeting. But unfortunately, life has just taken a spot that I, I don't know that I can continue to do this and give 100% of what it needs to. But I will see you all and still be involved in a lot of different ways. You're not going to get rid of me that easily, we'll put it that way. But I just won't be able to use my, my platform here in this manner. That's it.
That's a tough one to follow up on, Randy.
Say again?
That's a tough one to follow up on. A lot, a lot of stuff there, but anyway, we'll, we'll talk more about your, about your departure at some, some point when we can give you adequate response after we get over the shop. But anyway, you're giving us a little bit of pleasure tonight with your back prop there, so thank you for that. I've, I've given Mr. Gutshahl the prerogative of speaking next he's requested it for. I guess you have things to do.
Well, I was just going to address, I thought it was important to address the, what happened yesterday here. Obviously threats were made, which I think should be troubling to everyone here. Obviously, we have a crisis in our country right now, maybe even the world, when it comes to, I hate to say young people because I'm a young person, but, and the cell phones and the social media. Unfortunately, it's gotten to the point where people, especially young people, believe that they can do and say what they want to say and there would be no consequences. And thankfully, yesterday, we didn't have any serious issues. The sheriff's department, we want to thank them for their hard work and quick work in getting to the bottom of the threats that were made. bottom of the threats that were made here. You know, what we have to remember is, when you make a threat of any sort, what kind of impact that has on the school, all the employees, the students, the community. Obviously, with the recent events going on around the country, I think we all are keeping an extra eye and really listening to what's going on. So we're thankful that our students spoke up to the incidents of the threats that were made. And now we have to hope that our parents will take responsibility and discipline their children. You know, all of us up here have always stood very proudly and strongly for parental rights. And the school system, I believe, over the last few years has really become pro-parent rights because we believe it's important. But for that to work, we also have to get that back from the parents for that system to work. So I hope this is a good wake-up call, that it won't be something that is allowed, because it can be very serious, even if someone's messing around, trying to be funny or whatever. You know, these cell phones can really get you in trouble. And I know young people today are pretty much born with an iPhone and Apple Watch and AirPods in their ears. But you have to figure out how to use them appropriately and for good. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it's sad that that happened here, you know, threats. It can happen anywhere, regardless of if you think it can or not. So hopefully, this will send a message to everyone, including the parents, that they have to hold the children responsible for, you know, they need to keep an eye on social media and hold them responsible for any type of actions that can be very serious, like what we saw yesterday. Quickly, on a positive note, I got to help today at W.W. Robinson on behalf of the Rotary Club. They call it the School Store, which it used to be a stationary area where students would earn, I think it's tickets, and I guess for different things, good behavior and such. And you can turn them in for different things. This year, they changed it. It's a cart, so it actually moves around the class, or the school. And I guess I was fortunate, I drew the kindergartners today, so it was a good experience. I will say that most of them were very quick to choose. There wasn't a lot of thinking or overstimulation. But it was a good experience to be able to do that and be in the school and do that. So, yeah.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it.
Sure. I have a few comments that I wanted to talk about, and I'm going to start by saying, one of the very first things that I did when I became elected to the school board during my very first meeting with Dr. Shepherd, I believe it was, I approached her with the idea of having this mental health task force that we wanted to do in terms of getting all the different agencies and law enforcement and the teachers and all these different areas here in Shenandoah County to get together and help address some of the issues that we're seeing, not just with the kids, but also with our teachers. And Dr. Shepherd, to her credit, jumped right in, and she has really done a fantastic job with this mental health task force. We started meeting, I believe it was in March, and we meet every month. We have different people come in. We're also doing some presentations. But one of the good things about doing this is that you get to talk to a lot of different people who are involved at different levels of this epidemic. And it really is an epidemic. Not coincidentally, this, I want to, first of all, let me give a shout-out to this book. It's Digital Cocaine. I recommend that everybody reads this book. This is by Brad Huddleston. And we got to see him at a conference earlier this year, and he was a fantastic speaker, has some great information. And a lot of the information that I'm going to talk about right now comes from his book. In fact, we're trying to see if maybe we can bring him at some point here to Shenandoah County to talk to administrators, maybe even to parents, because he happens to live in the Shenandoah Valley. But one of the things that he talks about is that, you know, it's not a coincidence that the mental health crisis among our teenagers has gotten much worse over the last 25 years. And it has been at an alarming rate, with problems such as depression and anxiety increasing by 70%. Now, I don't know if this was pre-COVID or post-COVID, but I believe if you talk to anybody or any teacher, they're going to tell you that things got a lot worse after COVID. So this happened at the same time that technology started getting more of a hold of our kids. And like Kyle said, unfortunately, there's a lot of younger generations that don't know anything other than have a phone and have a laptop. So it's definitely going to be a challenge, and I understand the cell phone policy. There's a lot of different questions about that. But we have to take into consideration that it's not just the bullying, it's not just bad behaviors that they learn from the different social media. We also have a lot of the ADD and ADHD. They think that has to do a lot with the technology and how the brain kind of functions, but also with a lot of the new addictions that we're seeing. And specifically, we're talking about video gaming, which is actually a clinical impulse control disorder, but also pornography. Because one thing that I didn't know until I listened to Mr. Huddleston is, the majority of the people who view pornography actually do it in their cell phones. Some as young as five years old are starting to see it because it's available and it's free, and it's very easy to find it. So these are a lot of the things that I wanted to talk about, because not only do I believe that we do need to have a cell phone policy, and from all the teachers that I've talked to, and most of the parents, they agree we need to do something. I understand there's concerns because of all the world that we live in right now. So I know we're going to have to address some of these issues. The sports, for example, I don't know if we do something like text to parents directly and then let the kids know at school. But I would like for us to start a conversation beyond just a cell phone and take it into technology in general. One of the things that I'm finding out from a lot of these books that I'm reading and articles is that technology hasn't actually helped as much as we thought it would in the classroom. And one of the points that we're having is, again, is that the way that the brain is wired and a lot of the issues that are being created with this video digital addictions, they're not conducive to actually learning. For example, I don't know if you knew, but for example, when they talk about video gaming, many researchers have described the high from video gaming similar to cocaine plus heroin combined. And they're saying that spending just two hours on a game station is the equivalent to taking a line of cocaine in the high that it produces. One thing that is very interesting that I wanted to kind of mention from this book is that they talk about how a lot of the technology giants, Steve Jobs, Bill Gates, all these people out in Silicon Valley, did not let their kids use the screen. They did not have their kids, or strictly limited the amount of time that they spent on phones or computers. Steve Jobs strictly restricted the amount of times his kids spent on any kind of technology. They didn't even have iPads, tells you something. Bill Gates used to set a limit of 45 minutes a day of total screen time, an hour on the weekends. Sometimes he would allow for computer time if there was homework. But the Waldorf School in Silicon Valley, which is where most of these employees from Google and Apple and Yahoo and Hewlett Packard go to, doesn't even allow technology in the elementary school. They actually don't allow computers in high school. That's the first time that they're starting to use computers. I'll take a quote from the book that talks about the Waldorf School, saying, "But the school's teaching tools are anything but high-tech: pens and paper, knitting needles, and occasionally mud. Not a computer to be found, no screens at all. They are not allowed in the classroom, and the school even frowns on their use at home." So there must be something to this. I mean, if we're looking at a lot of these schools that are, that the best of the best are sending their kids to, and they don't have the computers, why are we putting so much time and money into these computers? I think we've been kind of fooled into thinking that they were going to do more than they have. We have to question whether that trade-off is worth it. But obviously, it's not going to be easy. So I just want to at least suggest it and start the conversation as to whether this is something that we need to do for the future. And related to that as well, with the mental health task force, we also want to start doing more mentoring. So we're going to be approaching some of the organizations in the area to see if this is something that we can start doing for our kids, have more mentoring for them. That's it.
Mike?
Well, first off, I'd like to tag team off of Gloria there. Hopefully, we can get that guy. That presentation was unreal. To see the MRI of the human brain of a heroin addict and somebody on a screen, the similarities between the two would just blow your mind. When he presented that evidence at that conference, it was just unreal. That being said, tagging off of Kyle there, I want to commend Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Heingardner, all the SCPS staff, having a son at Stralsburg High School yesterday when that lock-in happened. The communication, everything, top-notch. You all did a great job getting that information out and expediting the whole situation to get things back to normal. I know the stress level was high with students and staff, as witnessed by my son, and we were told about it last night. But I got to say, great job. Also, the advancement Mike Shabi talked about, kudos to all SCPS staff for moving us up the chain as far as where we fall in the state of Virginia when it comes to public schools. Great job on that as well. Ms. Hodges was talking about the exit interview, and one of the things under staff treatment, number one was, under what we can do, and it was appreciation for all the staff. I'd like to see us start moving towards some type of policy where we talk about the treatment of our teachers and staff, something to where maybe June 1st, every teacher knows what building they're going to, what classrooms they're going to. That way, they're provided plenty of time to decide whether they're going to stay with SCPS or move on. I'd like to see us start working on that and start talking about that. I also got to shout out Coach Lamb and the coaches at Stralsburg High School. He's rolled into taking over that football program, and it's off to a great start. So I got to hand out kudos to Coach Lamb and his staff. And let's go Rams. That's it for me. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Mr. Street?
All right. Randy, can you hear me?
I can.
I don't know what to say. Left the speeches with that blind side there. I'll be calling you tomorrow, hopefully. Sorry, Dr. Heingardner. Just about got taken again.
It's that cell phone lunch break, right?
I wish it was easy for the board to staff, you know, deny it on that, but I know it doesn't work that way. That's, we're sorry to hear that. Anyway, I want to thank individuals up here earlier to thank us, but I want to thank Mr. Mike Shabi. I want to thank you, Mike, for all you've done down on the southern campus, at the elementary school, the high school. I think everybody needs to know, he's put a lot of time and effort, playground, whatever. So thank you, Mr. Shabi, for all you've done down there, your hard work stepping up to the plate. Again, I want to thank Dr. Shepherd and your staff, teachers, for the ranking. Very impressive. So that's a job well done with the ranking of the state, and very proud of all the work and effort there. Along with Mike with Stralsburg, we all know the football program at Stonewall has been a little bit in a rut, but I want, it deserves some recognition, the numbers that have turned out, all the jerseys on the sideline. And I need to recognize and thank Coach Kokinen, Coach Miller, and his whole coaching staff, doing a great job. They're playing very respectfully. The comeback Friday night, I was very impressed with the football program, how they could have, halftime it wasn't good, first half wasn't, is pretty ugly. But, you know, hey, it's like I told them after the game, they deserved a lot of credit for coming back, and they dug their heels in, even though they lost that one point. It was almost like it was a win because they came back and didn't allow the other Nelson County to score. And so it's a good job to them for not giving up and come back and play football. And so very, very proud of the football program down there, and the JV team is off to a good start, 2-0. But the com lottery that I saw, that I've seen and saw Friday night, the stands, the line to get into the football game, it was just to see the community, and I think the community needs a little bit of praise for supporting that program. I look forward to seeing the other sports, cross-country volleyball. The, you know, I'm trying, I miss the card, and I get on coach coverage about this all the time. Us people that, you know, I don't know how to say this, but kind of the loud, old-school method, I love those cards, and, well, they're not available. So I don't know, a little difficult for me to keep up with. I love those cards, because I've had one in each car, one in the house, and, you know, hey, I got off work early, what's playing tonight, you know, and I had that card, but I miss that. Anyway, WRE, proud of WRE and what was mentioned earlier, the increase for Mr. Heisman. Kudos to them. I really support that and was able to touch base, and I'm hoping to be able to make it Saturday, but I definitely support that program. They're doing a great job. I had the opportunity today to go to Culpeper to see their basically new CTE facility. I was very, very, very pleased and educated. Whatever route we're facing in the future, whether it's renovation, whatever, or new, it was very nice. It was a privilege or very nice to see a facility that's built for CTE, and it was very, even though it seemed basic but efficient, if you had to invest money in, it was a very good example. So I was very pleased to be able to go there today and see their facility and how it's laid out and how it works. And I was very impressed, very impressed, very impressed to hear that one of our graduates from Stonewall is actually in administration. Didn't get to run into her, but I had no idea. I didn't find out till we were leaving. So I did get a chance to speak to her. A big thank you to the episodes that Kyle talked about earlier that we had. A big thank you to the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Carter, and resource officers, administration. This is a subject that we don't like. Would have never thought that we see this in today's society, unfortunately, but we have to deal with it. And I think I've mentioned this before, months ago, but this has to be taken seriously. And so I hope that the communication with the ones that need to know as the students, how serious this is and the consequences. But a big thank you to the Sheriff's Department and the resource officers and what they do and how they handle it, and to confirm that they have the protocol and to confirm with the ones that need to know, obviously, not just the students, not just the staff in the facilities, but also the parents, that they have a protocol in place and training. Also, a big thank you to the, Dr. Shepherd mentioned earlier, obviously, I'm a big advocate for the fair. I always refer to it as good, clean, country fun and educational with the raising of animals and the participation. But a big thank you to all the students, whether it's FFA, whether it's the bands, it's a great military day there, Triple Tech. But a big thank you to the FFA advisors running things down the show barn. And I may pat ourselves on the back here a little bit. And I don't mean to put down any other places. I'm not at the, I do not throw mud. But we just need to be proud of our fair that involves our students and our ag and everybody else, Triple Tech, like I said before, bands or whatever. Because when you travel, we do have a great fair with the participation, what we have to offer. We had an individual visit our fair, and I can't remember what county they came from, but they were just blown away, the size and the-- the, the size and the amount of activity and, and, and what all took place. And, and, uh, so anyway, a big thank you to all those that participated. Um, anyway, that's all, Colonel Barlow.
That's all? Good. Okay. Thanks, Todd. There's a lot of great, uh, good news stories out there. I'm not going to deliver this. I want to say a strong amen to what has been said by virtually everybody on this board today. I have several kind of workaday things I want to bring to attention to board. One is, um, we've been talking about how we can, uh, help, uh, Dr. Heingardner's, uh, policy, um, development for us that helps us come up with the right policies and turns them into things that Dr. Shepherd can turn into regulations. Um, so I, I want us to think about how we can, uh, who we can get to help us set up policy support services so that, uh, so that, uh, Dave's folks have people to work with and we can get data from policy gurus to help us turn this into kind of a, a good, a good process. So let's think about how we want to do that. Um, I think, uh, we've had various good inputs on the cell phone policy. So we'd be ready to have a good old-fashioned discussion, debate on that when we have our, um, when we have our next, uh, meeting. Uh, but I, I think we've got the, the good information in front of us. I think that those, uh, local and national incidents have actually occurred at appropriate time for us to make sure that parents, uh, students, and we in a school board actually understand the procedures, uh, that we follow and that we expect the sheriff to follow so that, uh, there is a, a feeling of, um, um, well-being in our, uh, in our county that, that we pay attention to this and it's done with the idea of hardening and, um, making safe our, our kids and our employees and in school during these kinds of threats. And that dovetails exactly with some of the cell phone things we'll be dealing with. Um, we do have to make, um, decisions about CTE. So I want us to keep, uh, plugging along on that, uh, in that regard. Um, I, I also was impressed today with the, uh, with the, uh, facility at Culpeper, which was very functional, very flexible. Uh, there, what was your word? They have future-proofed, haven't they? And, and, but it was no bells and whistles. And I liked that. There was no, no frou-frou with it. So I liked that approach. Um, and, uh, I'm going to end by saying, uh, going from, was it 112th? How, how low did we get with S O L scores once upon a time?
110.
Something like that? To 54th means we've gone from kind of, kind of rock bottom to in the first half, in, in two and a half, three years? And, um, I think while all the credit goes to teachers dedicated and rank and file and for the staff that work so hard in the superintendent's office, um, there is, there is my belief that, um, that kind of vision seeps down through an institution. And institutions know when somebody's coming in to give, uh, good leadership, a good guidance and support. And I think Dr. Shepherd's team, Dr. Shepherd personally, has been, uh, has been the one who's developed that, uh, that vision. Uh, and as I've said, at least three meetings in a row, uh, where there is no vision, the people perish. And, uh, and I think that academic and attendance improvement both testify to that. So, uh, so good for you guys. And that's, uh, all I have. Does anybody have a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second, second? Well, we got all the seconds we need on that one. All agree? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:45 PM.